Okay, so here we are. Should be good. I'll bring it up on the screen. You're good, Tom.
Okay, well, seven oh one. We'll call and order any additions to the agenda. Okay, hearing none, somebody wished to move agendas, Judy. Who says? You sent it?
Try moving once.
Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, we'll call for question. See if it'll work. And, Captain? Can you vote Judy or? Oh, okay, Judy can't, so she moved it, so.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
She's reading, so.
No. She's not on, so.
Do the hand move it?
So it's carried unanimously, so I guess we'll.
Oh, just here we go.
I think it just got on.
Oh, I already said a few, sorry.
Well, we'll try it once more and if it doesn't work, we'll. Okay, moving on to the minutes of November the eighth. Any errors, missions, questions? No?
I'll move to accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, so moves them. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the questions. We'll try it again and see if it's gonna work. Okay, it's carried unanimously. Great, moving on. Let's try our luck on the next one. Committee of the whole. Any discussion, questions on the committee of the whole? Okay, if not, somebody wished to move them? Or? Any discussion on Corl's motion?
Sorry.
Hearing none, we will call the question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the correspondence. There's a letter from Jason Kenny, Premier of Alberta. Congratulations letter. Then move on to the next one, which is the Library Association of Alberta. If you have any questions or comments on any of these, just ask them. Moving on to the letter from Minister Madu. So this one here.
Yeah, so the council's been waiting for an awful long time for this. This is the opportunity to have municipal feedback on the, on, in the, in the police, the police program, specifically the RCMP, the provincial police force. So Minister Madu has sent out this letter outlining the public engagement. And then the second to that was the instructions on, on the different events that are gonna be held around. And there will be one in Lethbridge on January twenty-sixth. And I know, I'm sure that there's a few of you councillors that are gonna be interested in that. So if you would like to attend, just let us know and we'll make the arrangements and.
I do.
Yeah, I kinda got the feeling that the majority of council who are able to attend would be. And so if you're interested in attending, please let us know and we'll, we'll get sign, everybody signed up for it.
Okay, thank you. So if we can let Ken, Kim or Karen know in the next day or two, or, I should say, day or two, we've got a few days, but.
Yeah, they're in January.
They're in January, so if you can let us know that we're interested in going. That's the closest really, one is the Lethbridge.
There's one in Clare's home on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
But, or Okatoks, depending on where people are, you know, most comfortable, there's, there's definitely enough in our area that we should be able to attend. And if a date doesn't work for you, it could possibly work somewhere else.
Yeah, so one, one is in the morning, one's in the afternoon, usually, and they go from side to side, so. Okay, so just pick a date if you can and if you wish to attend, then.
We'll get you signed up.
We'll get you signed up. Okay, anything else on those three items for correspondence? If not, somebody wished to move them for information? Okay, Barbara? Okay, any question on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. It's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to reports, financial reports. Cash statement, it's at the end of October thirty-first. Any questions?
To quote a previous councillor.
That sat in our chair?
Are we, Barbara, look like we're on track?
Yeah, as you can see, in our notice on demand account, we're carrying almost two million dollars, which again, from the explanation last time, was the replenishment of cash from borrowing for the pool. We were able to replenish our, our reserve accounts, so we're actually in a pretty decent financial position, cash-wise, right now.
Okay, any other?
I just gotta get used to this. So it says, general account, it says twenty-six million nine ninety-two, then it says, that's just the credit?
Yes.
So what's the credit?
So the credit, debit credit, money in and money out. So those, those numbers on that line for, specifically for that general account are just our transactions for
Yeah.
that are generated out of Great Plains. So really, what you want to pay most attention to would be the year-to-date. And that's the actual amount of cash that was in that account on the day that we pulled it in.
That's just the difference, right?
Yeah, so we, we're currently carrying two hundred and thirty-eight thousand in that account. And you guys know, based on the budget process, we spend about six hundred. So we pull money out of thirty or sixty or ninety days out of our notice on demand. So we carry the two million dollars in there and then we just pull on the thirty, sixty or ninety days' notice.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, somebody wished to move our cash statement? Judy? Okay, so any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the year-to-date. Was there anything in there that anybody would like to question?
So based on this, the information that you reviewed in the committee of the whole for the year-to-date, where we were, is on this report, so.
Yeah, so these are just the summaries, like, you know, when we did look at the budget process, that broke each one of those summary items down, where the money came from, where the money goes to, and all of them, but this is just a summary. This is what we, we should see every month. And this is what we usually show the public when we have a, a open house or, you know. So we're trying to keep them the same so that there's no questions, I guess, to you. Anyway, Lyle, do you have a comment or question?
Well, I was just curious, as general taxes and fees, the revenue is, you know, brackets, the variance is in brackets, but then our other ones are just like a.
Yeah, just, just a reporting thing. It would normally have a negative sign to it. It's just the way that it printed off on our report. The brackets still mean the negative.
Okay. And the negative means a negative, is what?
Yes, in, in that category.
Yeah.
Means you have to collect.
Yeah, okay.
So as an example, we pick up a school tax one, there's seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty cents left to collect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we haven't paid them the last payment out on that school tax one, so.
That, that is also prepayment, right? Because it hasn't included, yes?
That's right.
You prepaid your tax or monthly?
The tips, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a good point there, Judy, that on the revenue too, it doesn't mean that they're not gonna collect it. It's just that if there's enough people that are doing, paying on a monthly basis, they're still November and December to come in.
And something to talk about on that is the, the tips payment has significantly changed the way we do the finances for the town as well. You will see, and you've probably seen in the past, we normally take a three to four hundred thousand dollar operating bylaw every year. And that, what that used to do is, that used to carry us over cash-wise until we started collecting tax. And for the last several years, we haven't had to use it. We keep doing the bylaw just in case, but with the tips payment, we don't actually have to withdraw into our line of credit before taxes are started.
That's because you're paying, coming in every month.
Because we've, because we've now taken our cash flow and spread it out through the entire year, so.
Yeah.
So it's very helpful from a, from a cash management standpoint.
Yeah, because otherwise, the first six months, we have no direct income.
No money.
And, and then all of a sudden, all comes in and then, you know, then you, so again, some of the departments don't spend any of their capital until after that would have normally come in in June, July. Now, it allows them to still be able to do so, so sometimes you'll see them do some purchasing, major purchases in January, February, because they're able to have that cash flow.
The cash is in place.
And not have to worry.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I appreciate Warren today isn't too bad, but back in the, in the thirty eighties.
Eighties, when it was twenty percent.
Twenty plus, yeah, Warren was substantial, so it's, it's allowed us to do a lot better things, but it's. Okay, so any other questions on any other categories in there? Okay, if not, Will, Lyle moves it?
I make the motion to accept the year-to-date statement.
Okay, any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. It's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to bylaws and policies. Day twelve amendment.
One point four should read, I believe, remuneration instead of honorarium. Is that correct?
Right. Yeah, so we can amend that.
It's in the last sentence.
Yeah, and we will, and that was the point of this. Thank you, Barbara, for pointing that out. That was the point of it, is to take out the word honorarium. And it really, it comes down to taxation rules. It is why we're doing this. The taxes are different for an honorarium as opposed to an expense allowance, so, and the eligibility for GST on that as well, so.
Judy, you have another comment?
Yeah, on three point two. Expense allowance, you'd be allowed to show that expense allowances are paid? Is this quite little, just put an X in there?
Yes.
One point five has honorarium in it as well, per diem, in addition to the honorarium.
So. One point three, one point five for honorarium, two expense allowance, and three point two is like allowances. So the only difference that would make in your motion that you, if, if council's happy with those, is rather than as presented, you can, you can adopt it as amended. So you're taking it, giving me direction to amend it to those three points that you just brought up. The timing of it worked out fairly well for the AUMAs well, so we change it to Alberta municipalities. And that's really the only change. This policy was amended in June, or sorry, July, June of this year, based on the recommendation from the, from the committee of councillors that we're never gonna run again. I don't think she heard me. No. So those recommendations were made. This is just an update to clarify the honorarium as opposed to an expense allowance, which will also correspond with the rates and fees by law that we'll break through the next meeting as well, so.
Okay, so is there any questions on the amended policy? If not, somebody wished to move it? Will? Okay, a question on, discussion on Will's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to current business from the library board. This is first one.
We received a letter from the library board asking for two appointments. For those that have been here for this process before, the library board makes a recommendation. And because they run under the town's unblanked umbrella, but they are a standalone board, the town does need to do the formal appointments of the members to the library board, so. They've asked for Chelsea Finney for a two-year term and Laura Thomas for a one-year term. Those of you that know Laura was a former councillor that was, is willing to stay on on their board. This brings their numbers to nine. They could have a maximum of ten and as few as five members at large on this board.
Any thoughts, questions? No, somebody wished to move? Okay, Barbara? Okay, any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the open fire committee.
Again, this is another committee that, or members, we have, members at large. And we have a, a council member that sits on the board, so there's two members at large. And currently, the town has Judy that sits as a council member, Stu Burt as a member at large, and Paul Taylor is, was a member at large as a councillor and has said that he would be willing to let his name stand for a member-at-large position for a two-year term, based on his background and that the committee discussed at the last meeting. I believe they didn't have quorum, but they were able to send the recommendation to make sure that they'd be able to keep making quorum.
Okay, any thoughts or questions on this one? No, somebody wished, Judy? Okay, so Judy moves that we appoint Paul. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the Regional Assessment Review Board Member-at-Large.
So the Regional Assessment Review Board consists of members at large. We do have one councillor appointed to this as well. The majority of time they'll, for the assessment review board, they'll call on the members at large to begin with. And then a councillor, if they, they're stuck in a spot. We have the opportunity to appoint a citizen at large to sit on the board. And because Georgia Lee just recently finished three years, her three-year recertification, I reached out to her and asked her if she'd be willing to sit as a member at large on that. These ones are really hard to kinda draw people in, because of course, they have some training and the meetings are down in Lethbridge. But she said she'd be more than willing to do that, to make use of her certification for the next three years, so. We used to tease people that they don't, they never had to do anything on these boards, but I think the first year she ever sat on it with a councillor, she went to a meeting every week.
Yeah.
She, she did accuse me of tripping her, I believe, was the.
I think she used more words.
It was, it was different, it was different words, but the point is, she thought I tricked her.
Yeah, I think she said something. Says her own line, I won't say no.
But yeah, she said she'd be more than willing to sit and continue to volunteer for the community in that capacity.
Okay, so we've got a person that's willing to sit on it. Is there something wished to move the appointment? Oh, okay, Cole. Very cool. That's okay. Okay, any discussion on Will's motion?
Or Cole's.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
You wrote it down.
Wrote it down.
Well done.
Sorry, Cole.
And now can we retire?
I told you that I do this all the time, but there.
That's when you take your name tags and point them towards them.
I was just looking, straight up Will's. Anyway, Cole's motion, is any discussion on Cole's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Okay, it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the Shunook Inter-Municipal Subdivision and Development Appeal Board Member-at-Large.
We've all had a chance to read the report. We can appoint two citizens at large. This one's an even harder one, because you need a little bit of background from, say, the MPC, those sort of things for this board. Paul hasn't done the training yet that's required for it, but he said he'd be willing to do it. They're doing them online and I believe Karen was working to get this together, because of course, we also need to do a councillor as well for this, so. Paul was more than happy to put his name forward to continue volunteering for the community in this capacity. Again, this is another one of them, they don't do anything for a long time and then all of a sudden, they're, they're called upon to. And with the hopeful development that we may have, we may actually have some, hopefully, we won't have appeals, but, yeah.
Okay, so anybody interested in pointing Paul to this position? Lyle moves. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the meter repair and replacement program.
And I apologize for the spelling mistake on the title. The report, you've all had a chance to look through the report. We did have a brief conversation at the, at the budget meeting about the impacts of this. We brought it back. Stu actually went to AccuFlow and received a formal quote for this. This will cover all the meters that are currently not working and are anticipated, ones that are going to be added to the list. As you can see, it will provide one hundred and eighty new meters and one hundred and forty, forty new bodies for the ones. So if anyone who wants that their heads are still working, they'll still be able to change those out. The quote provided was for a hundred and nine thousand dollars. You guys saw our budget, that falls well outside the scope of what we can do inside of our operation budget. And based on the brief conversations and the feelings of council, we are looking at reserves and that. We've made a recommendation to pull that from the contingency reserve, which will drop that contingency approximately in half, so. It's very straightforward, if you'd like to move forward with it, that's where we can pull the funds. There is discussion, you could pull it out of the water itself, there's a hundred and twelve thousand in there, but that doesn't allow for, for anything in reserve in the, in the water side of things, so.
Yeah, years ago, we used to use this contingency, and we used to put it down when Harold was here as, Harold's flush funny.
Our owners don't like that word.
But, yeah, so anyway, it was a, it was an area which, you know, like Kim had said earlier, that council has a little bit of the ability to take out of during the year and not affect your reserves. So, you know, it's sitting there with a little bit of money in it and this is an opportunity to move this project forward. Like Richard did say, at one of our discussions on it, that, you know, there's potential that some people are not paying their share for water because they're just getting a fixed amount. Some might be the opposite way around, but the majority of people probably would use at least as much as what's being charged.
Based, based on the twelve cubes, we did that on, based on, on our winter usage. So the meters that weren't working through the summer weren't capturing in the water, and it was being used for water in lawns, gardens, and that sort of thing, so that's the major concern with this. The opportunity to get in and repair quite a few. Stu was able to expend his entire inventory, so they changed fifty meters in the week before last. So he's completely expended all of the inventory that he did have, so.
We should be able to pay that, that amount of money within two years. You know, if you take an average of, say, ten to twenty cubes of difference, at one buck seventy-five, that's quite a bit of money. And I would like to see, even at that point, we keep some money back as we take that money, once we get this paid for, put some money in a fund just for meters, so Stu can just go to that, you know, because these things are gonna break down. Like they, there's fluid flowing through them all the time, you know, and then maybe we can, you know, sit on top of it.
And that's his hope with the ultrasonic meters?
Yeah.
Is that there is no moving parts, so potentially, there should be less, less issues with it, so that's kinda his plan. As he said, he should be able to keep up in the regular repair and maintenance budget from that point.
Yeah.
The majority of these that did fail were that manufacturer error. And we did take as much advantage of the bodies at the seventy dollars apiece as we could. It's just the rate that they failed at is, is beginning, just all of a sudden dropped right off. And then, of course, COVID hit and they couldn't go into any houses, so.
The other advantage too is that this will get a good start on it, will save that five or ten percent increase that they're anticipating in a year. Which, you know, is, is substantial, so I mean, it gives us some good opportunity.
I'll make that motion that we go ahead and spend that hundred and nine thousand, get caught up. It'll pay back.
And it's gonna come out of that contingency?
Yeah, so this is one of the ones, Richard, that I, very specifically, we have to rid the motion very specifically, because you are pulling from a reserve, so for the purposes of the auditor, if, if you don't mind, I'll read the, the motion aloud, so that everybody knows what, exactly what we're doing with it. The council approved a hundred and nine thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty cents to be drawn from the contingency reserve for the purpose, purchase, for the purpose of funding the purchase of water meters as per quote twelve six nine nine six from AccuFlow Meter Services Limited.
Okay, so we have Richard's motion. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, carried none, we'll call the question. And it's carried unanimously, thank you.
All right, just, this had nothing to do with the motion, but just curious, how many water meters do we have?
Eleven hundred. It's a substantial amount, twenty percent of our system.
Because we, I mean, they changed, I forget how, it was a few years ago, we changed.
All of them.
All of them?
Yeah. So this is a new program where we went to Neptune. And I guess the background on that, the reason why we went to Neptune is we had several in our system that were thirty years old that were still working perfectly. So we went with that system for reliability and then we ended up getting a bad batch from the manufacturer. And they did cover us for warranty, but we're ten years out now, so they said, that's it, we'll still give you the bodies at seventy dollars. But you should be looking at replacing some of these meters with the ultrasonic, so that's where.
Because we replaced some less than five years ago.
We, we're in a constant state of, of, of changing ones that have failed. Anything that has batteries and moving parts. So Tom, Tom's made a forty-year living replacing those things. So like Lyle's comment, on average, what would you say, how many of these things kind of default? On average, and I know from the dollar side, we budget five thousand dollars for. And depending on whether we have to do bodies or, and it wasn't until the last couple of years that we just really, really started failing at a rate that we just couldn't keep up, that's at the five thousand dollars.
And unfortunately, that's, that's one disadvantage to doing a, you know, a, a program where you change them all within a short period of time. Like you change their, all in town in a year, they're.
They all fail.
And so then when they start to fall, fail, then they start to fail drastically at once. So more or less what Richard said, both doing a percentage, you know, and having that money in the budget so they can ongoing replace them, so as they normally, but obviously, they just had more fail than what.
Yeah, like what Richard says, if we can stagger that out, I think long-term, we can do. And so what Stu's gonna do is, once we get all of these purchased here and installed, then going forward, as they get added to the list, is re-looking at that in the, in the operation budget, on whether the five thousand dollars is enough, whether it's too much, whether, you know, whether we need more. And that'll be up to you guys to just set that level. Same as trees, sidewalks, everything else. How much do you wanna do, how much are we gonna pay for?
Hopefully, we can get through two years without any replacements and then we'll be comfortable.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or else maybe what they can do too is, like you said, you'll buy so many every year, then all of a sudden, instead of just having the money in the bank, you've got them.
You've got the inventory. You've got the inventory.
Yeah, the inventory, yeah.
I mean, the downfall is sometimes you can get a better price if you've got a lump sum, but the downfall too is that if it keeps on going up two to five or 10% every year, it doesn't take long to pay for that, so. Anyway, so again, when Stu brings it up, we'll see what we have in the money in budget and see if that's still going to be enough or not.
It'll come to next year's operation budget, for sure.
Okay, moving on to 76, the mower replacement.
This is very straightforward, you've all had a chance to read the report. This is to get council's permission to actually take this up for tender. This was supposed to be done in the spring of this year, but because of council's decision to move the skid steer up this year, Stu held off on the mower and again, he was also hoping that we'd get a better price getting a 2021 or 2022. And of course, you never know whether dealers have stock right now is a big issue as well, so this gives some alternatives. So really what this is, is to give you guys the numbers, where we're at. And he did want you to know that there's a potential increase from 22,000 in trade difference to 25,000. And he's anticipating a new machine coming in at 30. Sometimes with the quoting process, we do get very competitive quotes that can drive that price down. But he's asking for your permission to put it up for tender and we've included the replacement plan that clearly showed it for replacement for this year. If you are interested in that.
So just permission to send it out for tender. Will?
I'd like to recommend that council directs the administration to prepare and distribute tender documents for the purpose of receiving quotations for unused 2021 or newer 72-inch deck mowers.
Awesome.
Thank you. Any discussion on Will's?
The $211,000 there in common service capital reserve, that's different than what we just took over.
Yes, so that's the one specifically held for the equipment repair and that's the one that you deposit 95,000 dollars a year in. And the idea is, the way we've got the equipment staggered on that list that you can see, is when we put the 95,000 a year in, a lot of years it will accumulate for the big year when we have to expand 370 or 350,000 dollars out of the account. So, because we have a few bigger purchases like our great, our street sweeper.
Will, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering how often this is updated for prices?
As, as we get them, we know that we can't do a 25-year guess, so that's where Stu is anticipating this price. What we'll do is we'll do the actual tendering, see where it comes in at and then we'll, and that's where it says on here that we, going forward, we'll amend to reflect the increase in the cost of these mowers.
So as an example, we've got $22,000 guesstimated in this 25-year capital. If it comes in at 24, then they'll adjust all the rest of them, like the.
From this year forward.
So where it says 22,000 for a deck mower all the way down, it'll get changed to 24,000 all the way down, even though that we anticipated it's going to change.
That'll keep that 25-year total fluctuating, but again, saying that we can buy a deck mower in 2045 for $22,000, we know is not reasonable, but we need a number to give you every year that is, and we need that 25 years so that we can divide that total, factually give a yearly amount to throw in the, in the reserves, so. So yeah, we'll, we update that and you guys approve this 25-year capital plan every spring with the budget.
Okay, so Will has a motion on the floor, any other discussion on it? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Okay, it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to town office 2021 holiday hours.
Yes, this seems like a very silly thing, we do have it in policy that if, because council closes the town office on statutory holidays or in the days in lieu of statutory holidays, so if Christmas stuff falls on a Saturday, we can either take Monday or Friday off. But the way the holidays fall this year, 25th is a Saturday, 26th is a Sunday, so we're staggering the days. So Friday and Monday are in lieu of the stat holidays. The only one that we don't have is council normally closes at noon on the 24th and 31st. And that's to give family time to travel, you know, can't travel these years, but also, you know, gives an opportunity for any last-minute bill payments, that sort of thing, we're open for a half-day on those. Because it's in policy for the days off in lieu, if council would like to move forward with being closed at noon on the 31st, you do need a motion, a formal motion from council to do that.
It's easy, it's a fairly quiet day, it's, you know, yeah, really quite quiet.
That's a, that's a paid half-day, right?
I'll make the motion.
Cole moves that we close at noon on the 24th and the 31st. Okay, any questions on, discussion on?
Just on the 31st.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. So yeah, the 31st, apologize, thank you. Any discussion on Cole's motion?
Just assuming staff is cool with that?
Yes, yeah, generally on a normal year, like Richard said, the majority of the staff inside are salaried, so it is a half-day off paid. So again, that staff is always very appreciative of those half-days, so.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll call it question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, thank you, we'll move on to community reports that were written. So Vulcan County Health and Wellness Foundation. Any questions on any of the, Barbara's kind of discussed some of this with some of us, so. Hearing none, we'll move on to the MPC draft minutes of November the 9th. Any questions on that one? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Vulcan Regional Response to Elder Use Council, November 16th minutes. Any questions on that one?
This one wasn't a formal meeting because of what, didn't meet quorum, is that right?
That is correct.
They just did the director's report?
Oh, sorry. I read the part that said minutes, I guess.
It is, it is the minutes on this one?
Yeah.
But it's for information.
Yes, perfect, thank you.
You can pass anything.
Okay, any questions for Barbara on that one, or? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the community, the whole.
This is just a duplicate, the committee would just approve the minutes, so.
So that was, yeah, thank you, we've approved the minutes for it, but. Okay, any questions on any of those four committees? If not, somebody wish to file in for information? Richard? Okay, any question on Richard's motion then? Hearing none, we'll call the question. No, no, no. It's stuck on line, I don't know what's up, my voice is. Oh, there it goes, there it goes. Okay, it's carried unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to verbal reports, we'll start off with Councilor Magnusson.
As you can see, we had an MPC meeting on the 9th. And that's the only meeting I've had so far. I did have a conversation with the taxpayer on the walking path. And this is something we've brought up before. There are certain areas on the walking path that can sometimes get icy. And, you know, the concern that, you know, we don't want anybody slipping and falling. And if there was something that the town could do to de-ice, I don't know, sprinkle sand or de-icer on it. See, this has been discussed with the previous council.
Previous council.
And the concern there is, I think, if, do we have enough manpower to do that? And what do you put on the ice? Because if you put different de-icers on there, there's people there with pets and if they get, the pets get stuck in their, stuck in their paws. It's, it's a bit of a, it can create a, I can see his point, but he can see the point of other people too and, and who's responsible for that, who cleans it up, who replies it. So I said I would bring that up in council.
It's mainly that one chunk in that's the worst.
Yeah.
The, the piece on the.
It's, it's by the golf course.
Yeah, the north side of the golf course, no, you're.
Legality wise, like this is a town, that's a town walkway, right, that the kids went put in, was that that one?
The connect, yeah.
Oh, the connect?
Yeah.
So are we legal, are we liable for anything?
Yes, but we, but we legally cover our obligations by doing the snow removal, that sort of thing. And one of the things that we do, again, the north side of the golf course, along the, that avenue there, it's, the Carriganas don't allow any sun to get to that, walk out to burn it off. So what the guys do is they run over it, put the blade down, try to break it up and it's, it's just an ongoing thing. The, again, there's li, there's probably larger liability because we can, we can show when we do maintenance on it. It's the same as our road sidewalks, anything else like that around town, we can show when we do the maintenance. There's a larger liability side by putting de-icer of anything other than just say a sand on it because of, you know, paths, those sort of things. And again, the manpower and equipment, we don't have anything that distributes sand that could drive on a walking path in the wintertime, so that would mean putting it in the bucket and hand spreading it throughout. And then again, with that, you also have to clean that up.
Yeah, so.
So Stu, Stu, when it went, sorry, when it went through, just to give you the full, when it went through council last time, the determination was to keep scraping it with the, with the equipment that we have and to try to just make a conscious effort to try to make sure that we're on top of it as, as much as we can.
Do we need any signage or like when we send out bills, should we put on a little thing on the bottom so it shows we've made an effort that way? Or, like, I know it sounds stupid, I mean, you walk in, we live in Alberta, you know, there's snow, there's ice, it melts, it freezes. You know, everybody knows that, but you know how the world is, you know, so I'm just wondering if liability wise.
When we looked into some of the other communities, just, and then very informally just asked you, some of the solutions that have been for that are closing the pathways or, again, own risks besides. We do have other paths in town that we do close for the winter, there's one on 4th Street and one that goes across the Chinook that, once they get snowed in, we just leave the snow behind for the season, so. There has been discussion on those in the past, on whether we should be keeping those open as well. But those ones fall back on no place to put the snow because you're pounding it against the neighbor's fence and the liability of knocking down the way the neighbor's fence by, climbing snow against it, so.
Yeah, and where that, where the issue is, it's just a very low spot.
Yeah.
So the only thing that you could do is build it up, but then you're, I don't know.
Might be pushing it around as well.
Well, the whole, the whole length, depending on the way the sun is and the frost is, it can be pretty nasty, that whole length.
Yeah.
You know, you're right though, Judy, there is one spot that's probably worse than others, but that whole, what I'd call the north side of the golf course there, potentially from corner to corner, potentially can be bad.
And from a maintenance standpoint, in the winter for the snow removal, that is, you know, the walking path is usually a daily thing. We've had a very good year this year for that. Most of our issues fall in the early spring, when we get a melt, the water runs across the path, it freezes at night and then doesn't get any sun on it to break it up. And even when those days happen, we just run the, run the blade down and try to rough the top up, very similar to what we do on the streets when we start to get the ice built up on the streets. We just don't have the option of taking our sander up there.
Yeah.
Anything else, or? Any questions for that? Yes, thank you, moving on to councillor Book.
I haven't had any meetings at all, so.
Okay, any questions, Rich? Okay, councillor Smith.
I have my community, my first community futures meeting on November 25th. I had my first press meeting on November 24th. We elected the officials for both and we went through our orientation of both committees and boards. Really excited for it. We didn't go over much except for what the, what each organization is about, you know, just excited to learn more. I'll keep you guys updated when we get into some cool stuff.
Okay, any questions from Will? Okay, thank you, councillor Sanderson.
I was also at the MCP meeting and then on November 11th, we had a Zoom call for the Markey Foundation. It was a closed session only for new information that was coming in. And then on the 15th, I had a victim services meeting at the county office. We discussed completing a performance review for our program manager, Jasmine Raffiano. And if none of you, well, I guess we will meet her in December, she's a wonderful addition to our community. We went over three policies for meeting attendance, credit card usage and policy for COVID when going to court. Court dates keep getting set back because they're always changing the regulations. So it is a big concern that people are being held up going to court, so. We also picked the date for our Christmas party, we put on a Christmas party for the RCMP and their families, all the volunteer advocates and their families. It's something we do to show our appreciation and we have a really good, strong relationship with the RCMP and they really have taken our, our, I guess, that we put on for them. On November 25th, I had two meetings, one with the fire committee, we went over the budget and I got a tour of the whole fire hall. So that was really interesting, really appreciated that. November 25th also had a FCC, SCSS Zoom call. Again, it was for budget planning. And then I read the CAO report and I just got tired reading it.
Hopefully that wasn't mine.
That was. I thought my line was busy. So that's it.
Okay, any questions for Judy? Hearing none, we'll move on to councillor Moore Puffy.
We had, of course, the elder use one, like you guys saw, the minutes, I guess, that we discussed. We are having another meeting on December 7th. Gabrielle, she's going to continue working on collaboration with some grants with ClarisCon because we work in partnership with them. And then the Vulcan County Health and Wellness meeting, the last one was November 24th. And Jody Gateman did mention that in Edmonton, they made a lot of comparisons about the MS that very similar, just slightly different than what we did at the U of M. And I have an invitation to attend the, as a trustee for the library, the library trustee I've been appointed for Chinook Arch.
Okay.
Meeting for this coming Thursday evening. And we are not having a formal library meeting in December, we're going to have it in January. What I understand, as well as Health and Wellness, we won't have one in December, just the victims or elder use. I almost said victims of the season.
Any questions for, if not, we'll move on to councillor Dunham.
I have not had any scheduled meetings since our last council reports.
Okay, any questions for Cole? Okay, moving on to me, on November the 9th, Lyle and I, we, we met with a developer and I guess Jim, had a quite a good discussion and on the 12th, everybody. And on the twelfth, everybody was here, other than Will, was having an opportunity to do our tour. So hopefully everybody saw some stuff that they haven't, that had an opportunity to see before and experience some of life that's not normally, something that you normally like to deal with. Seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, again, we all attended the A U A and now the A M conference. And thank you very much for everybody that was able to attend. But hopefully you guys got something out of it. And we'll probably, when we do our planning session, we'll discuss more about that. Let's see, we need to book for next year. It's in September this, this year, twenty twenty-two, and it's in Calgary. So hopefully you've had an opportunity to write those dates down so that if you, we usually try and book, you know, long ways in advance so that Karen can get us into a hotel at a reasonable rate. Again, our committee, the whole, hopefully everybody had an opportunity to get the information out of the, out of the budget process. It's something that we have done, some, some councils don't, councils don't do that. But we like to give you kind of a pre-chance to look it over. Twenty-fifth, I went to the golf club meeting for Judy and it was really interesting. They've got some, they've did, that's an interviewing process for interviewing. They've got some potential candidates, so it's coming along pretty good. It showed how they've started to put some funds away and for different programs and different events and some of the stuff that they're buying for. So Judy's done a good job of keeping us up to date on that and hopefully, you know, we'll go from there. This next couple of weeks, I, you know, we, we all have our M J training on the second and third in Leffreche on the, and Karen sent out the information for that. So I do have a solid waste on the first. And so we had a kind of a pre-meeting with a couple of members of the solid waste to discuss, you know, what we needed to do to, to the, bring up everybody up to speed on what's coming up. So, you know, the budget process. Other than that, I was in Claris Home and I was at a customer's house there and they were, had taken a tour. They had to come to Vulcan, so they took a tour from Claris Home and they went to Nanton, over to Black Diamond, Turner Valley, through Mosley, around and came to Vulcan, you know, to pay a bill that they have for getting some work done in Claris Home. And they were thoroughly impressed with our community. They, they said we need to give thanks to our, our town crew for keeping it as clean. They came in when it was a little later and they saw the lights and they were thoroughly impressed. You know, if you're not impressed with the lights, obviously you must have some eye problems. It is very impressive.
Be biased.
Well, I am, I am biased. I mean, it looks good either coming from the east or the west. My wife likes going east and, you know, looking at those arches in the morning time. But, you know, either way, it is very impressive. So the town crew needs a pat on the back for, for doing those and, and looking after them, keep them in shape. So, so other than that, that's all I had unless somebody, I mean, I've got some same last time coming up. But any questions for me?
To your point about those lights, I've seen friends of my wife's who aren't from Vulcan and they've got face, on Facebook and their comments are quite glowing of it anyways.
They look cool, that's for sure.
Really, really, yeah, there's been quite a few conversations around those lights. And then hopefully someday being able to redo the moonlight madness parades that we shared before Christmas and that. So hopefully someday we'll be able to do that again.
If we're willing.
Yeah, okay, so if there's no other questions, we need somebody to file the council reports. Okay, Judy? Okay, any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it is just about carried unanimously, one more call.
It's getting over.
It's slowing down. No, we're still missing on.
We're not doing it?
It's going to come up.
You've got a razor.
Not fit, so Barbara moves on. There's bills, thank you, so it's carried unanimously.
Here it is.
Just came up.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move on to the administrative reports. So again, if you notice, one, at the end of one, one session, we have everybody's and at the other one, we just have Kim's.
So my fault in between the normal monthly reports that do and because of the, you guys as council look to me for answers on all of these things, I've decided that I'll put my report together every meeting so that you basically know what's happening. And it's easier to do two weeks than it is to try to put a month into a singular report. So as you can see, we are able to accomplish everything from the last meeting. The meetings, the things that are on this list that are outstanding are going to be outstanding, obviously, until we do the rates of duties by law. The sports courts that are being proposal putting together from our engineers as we speak. The request for the nine in the line to supply an inventory of their art is, they're, they still haven't supplied us with anything. So that one will be outstanding for a while. The traffic bylaw again is going to fall into your planning to see how we can move forward with that. And the, the bird of prey, we haven't heard anything back from the committee on that. And when we were out doing our tours, I explained the irrigation out of the lagoons and it's dependent on Anderson purchasing the equipment and then going into an agreement with us. So motions are there, some of it honestly is going to stay there until, if there's any items on there, the council wants me to strike off. I promise you the next time I won't go through this as thoroughly, I'll just say if there's any questions. But for the first couple, I'll just keep your mind on, on ones. Anything that we have accomplished between now and when they were put on the list are in gray and they'll be gone at the next meeting. So that's my activity list.
Okay, any questions for Kim on that? If not, we'll move on to the mid C O.
So, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll do the meetings, I guess, at the end. We talked to Service Alberta about a concern that was brought forward. It's to do with cemetery and it's with a resident of Milo. And I'll just leave you guys to figure out what that is and what's going on. If you want some further information, when, when we're not on camera, I can, I can fill you in with the details. But Service, Service Alberta has told us that it's a civil dispute and that we're not to do anything until we, we have legal documents on it. So dealt with that, executed the airport agreement. We're just looking at how we're going to transition that. Obviously conducted the facility tours, met with Cima Plus for the sports courts. Real estate agents for, but Lyle seems to be bringing us lots of land purchase offers, which is good. And it means there's lots of interest out there right now. So that is actually, just trying to figure that out, it's chewed up a fair amount of time. And good time to bring stuff back to council to make sure that we can move forward with, bring stuff back to council to make sure that we can move forward with any CRA returns. And of course, because they're not a society anymore, we're trying to figure out how to get that cleared up. They have said that there's money owing to them. But when you look at our previous annual returns, it will most likely be that they owe less money. And so we're trying to figure that out because it's just, I've been trying to provide them as much information as I can so that we can do that. So that's not really town related, but it is town related. So again, everything that the, the way they promised they would, that their development agreement at this point is, or their development permits at this point are all in order and they're doing, put everything together. Again, I hope that that, that meeting brought forward quite a bit of information and this two weeks discussed at the, at the open meeting at council in December, following up with the, doing the land transfer, getting lawyers lined up to make sure all that happens. Was out at the office for the A U A convention, a zoning proposal. And we had Lyle attend as the head of the MPC, Chair of the MPC, Tom attend as a year tour. And when we did our tour, I gave you a brief update. And for Will, I can, if, if you've got some time, I can sit you down and get just a close note to what we're doing. We did run out of time, which means there was lots of good discussion. Will, if we get an opportunity, we can always do a tour free for you. If you would like to go in while it's closed, we can make arrangements. But I encourage you, when it does open in the, this spring, to go in there and have a tour. It's a, it's a really important facility in our community. Wouldn't have done as much good to go in there at the start when we got done our, done our meeting. So I do apologize that we didn't have time to get in there. Property tax sale in the council chambers on November fifteenth, as I changed on those. We had a regional C O meeting, we used to do these twice a year, spring and fall. And it's the C Os from all the villages, the county and myself, it's where we're at and just changes in council, that sort of thing. You guys approved pending development agreement. So we sat down and discussed the development agreement and Southbury fought council for final approval. So that one's moving forward and we'll have a.
Any questions for Kim? Okay, if not, somebody wish to move, call the question? Okay, please, so, okay.